A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Isolate the flag of the St. Louis Metro. The standing example of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
You ready? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity together this day. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. We ask for your guidance throughout this meeting and that all of our thoughts and actions would reflect your holy will. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Yeah, they want you to come if you win.
Because you can keep gambling. Eventually they'll get you. Eventually they'll get you.
Okay. Timed agenda, public comments and announcements. Do you have any public comments and announcements? Okay, moving on. Trailing agenda. Do you need service of budget adjustment?
We've got a presentation.
Oh. Where do I see that?
Number two.
Under public.
I think you've got the old agenda.
Yeah, there was an amended one.
The old agenda's on our screen.
Oh.
I don't have it either.
There's one.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning. Uh, before we start, I just wanted to apologize for Roberta not being able to be here. She's in a NMC grants collective meeting. Uh, today we have the acceptance and approval of the Eddy County FY 2018-19 audit. Alan Bowers from Car Rigs in Ingram will be presenting and discussing the FY 2018-19 county audit for approval.
Thank you all for having me. Um, my name is AJ, or I go by AJ. Uh, we'll go over the audit itself. We hand out just a little bit of a kind of a one sheet. Kind of summarizes the presentation overall. Um, so we'll just kind of walk through that here. So first really what kind of what we're going to look at today really quickly. We're going to go over kind of the timeline, the auditors' reports, some of the financial statement highlights, um, real high level on the finding items. A single audit highlights some upcoming changes and other things that we see when it comes to the county or within the industry that could be pertinent to you to consider as you kind of move forward. From the timeline of the audit, this is a long process, so I definitely thank you all for the continued cooperation. We really started this all the way back in June and July timeframe. We're onsite back in August and September. Independent audit report was dated the 27th. The exit presentation, we were here on November 19th to submit up to the state by the December 1st timeframe. Then they, they released the financial statement on the 23rd and here we are doing the final presentation to y'all. Really what we're here for, obviously the financial statements, 220 pages, it's, this is your document. Uh, we have three reports that are within the financial statements. The main report that we're looking at, independent audit report, is going to be towards the front of the financial pages, 10, 11, 12 area, and that's an unmodified opinion. So that's the best opinion you can get. What that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. There's no areas where we could not render an opinion or we couldn't find adequate support. So when we look at things like hard numbers, what we would call a bank statement, your cash numbers, we can confirm those. We know what's there. The others, things such as estimates, depreciation expense, pension liabilities, uh, these areas where you have a, an estimate number, we have to come up and test your policies and look at those. And again, there's no area where we couldn't find adequate support or policy that goes along with that. The other two reports in the financial, towards the back, one of them is the independent audit report in relation to internal controls, or what we call the generally accepted government auditing standards report. That report is a negative assurance report. What it means is we look at internal controls for compliance and reporting, but we don't test internal controls for reliance and render an opinion on those. So negative assurance is, these are items that we noted, others may exist that we did not identify. Okay? So always being, paying attention to those, uh, those reports themselves. There are, the county and Rita are both reported in this financial statement. They were both reported in those findings. There are five overall findings, two on the county, three on Rita, that qualify as a level of New Mexico findings. So they don't rise to the level of reportable under government auditing standards of a material weakness or a significant deficiency or material noncompliance. They're all considered other matters that are reported in the report in the state of New Mexico, but not something that is considered more significant that requires board attention. So I'll highlight what they are at the end. The last is that we do a report on compliance with direct programs, direct material compliance requirements. And we again had no federal findings that we noted, and we had unmodified opinions on those two programs that we looked at. So I'll, I'll touch on those momentarily. Real quick, kind of from a statement of, you know, the financial side themselves, the statement of net position, that's what you, in industry, would look at your balance sheet. So that's going to be overall from the county, it's going to have the assets, liabilities, your equity sections, and kind of looking at what your five-year trends are. So I've got a couple graphs up here. You have the table format. So the five years, okay, you know, the assets have increased significantly. There was an increase actually of $44 million year over year in, in the assets themselves with the construction projects that have been ongoing. The liabilities, there's significant changes mainly in relation to net pension liability, OPEB liabilities, and then some changes in the AP that had offset from the prior year. The para and the OPEB, those are two, you have your proportionate share of the para liability and the retiree healthcare liability on the books of the county. Those standards have been implemented for two and five years. Um, five years for para, two years for retiree healthcare. The way that is, is the liability that's at the state side gets broken out proportionately to all of the participants and then goes on all the participants' records to, to show that. So you'll see spikes in those and it affects that net position. The reason I bring that up is those are things to pay attention to when you go out for debt. Understand your bond ratings and the way that those work because those are liabilities that at some point, if they went cold, you'd be liable for. But that's something, of course, to work with para on because everyone says that's their promise, not ours. So that's not my deal. I'm just here to report what has happened. I'm a historian. So I'm, as an accountant, um, so we're looking at what is on the books there. And the net position's going to fluctuate based on those. So you look at this graph, this is going to be in relation to the assets. So as you can see, the top line's going to be total assets. The bottom line, that's the light blue, is your cash and investments, which has steadily gone up over the last few years with the increase of oil and gas and the revenues that you've received and monitoring your expenses as well as, you know, the way the fixed assets have come. And that yellow line is going to be your total capital assets with a lot of the road projects, the infrastructure that's been going on over the last few years. You can see that steady increase which is driving the, the total increase. The liability side, top line again, total liabilities. The yellow line, as you can, that's actually your, the net pension liability and the OPEB liability. So as you can see, that's the driver of your liabilities. Okay? So that's about $60 million in the current year, those two combined. Just knowing the changes that OPEB came on in 2018, net pension liability, you started recording it in 2015. So you've got five years' worth of data on that. And then the, the bottom line's really the total debt. You guys don't carry a whole lot of debt, but it's things to pay attention to. Net pension liability, or I mean, sorry, your statement of net position, your total net position's 252 million, and that unrestricted is the thing to pay attention to. That's what's not spoken for. That's not sitting in an asset. That's not sitting in some capital projects fund or anything that's been committed. That's unrestricted. So where those liabilities for net pension liability are, or OPEB, they would be in that number. So just, that's still a positive, but it's something to, that's the one that the bondholders will look at. The statement of activity is going to be your income statement, so revenues and expenses. When you look at kind of your program revenues or your overall revenues of how they've increased over the years, um, program revenues actually had decreased based on the grants, but then there was other increases in relation to your general items for gross receipts taxes and, you know, oil and gas taxes. The expense side, um, increased 18 million from the prior year. Some of that's going to be related to county operational funds, about $5 million. The pension expenses and OPEB expenses are reported through there. This doesn't include capital because those are, those have been removed. This is going to have something like depreciation in those estimate items. And then, um, the rest of it's going to be pretty consistent in prior years. So as you look at your total revenue line, it's been out, it's far outpacing the expense side. As you see with the increase in cash, that all makes sense. Okay? Uh, the expenses have been pretty consistent. Again, you had that tick up in, in the prior year. Counties' main operating fund and the general fund, just, we like to show you what things aren't spoken for, kind of where you're sitting. Consistent over the five-year, again, continued increase over the last few years with the gross receipts taxes and oil and gas. So expenditures, they were consistent until 2019. There was an increase of about $5 million in the expense side. That doesn't mean the support that's going to other funds, but the expenses themselves. There was some increased fees on the maintenance costs. There was the sinkhole. There was the salary increases. Okay? Which got spent out of there. Cash fluctuates with that. And then the budget expenditures, we like to just show you that final budget to where the actuals were to show how you're monitoring those as you kind of go through the year. So revenues, steady increase and then severe over the last couple of years, oil and gas and GRTs. So revenue's good. And then really the expenses have been very consistent. Again, there was those few items in the prior year. So there, you're still using, you're still monitoring that as with your cashes increasing, cash investments going up along with it. Remember, you're still using some of the funding from the general fund and it's supporting some other programs and things like that, but that, that can affect those balances, but it's not necessarily an expense. But your cash has been steadily going up. And then budget variances, really between 3.9 to 6.2 over the last five years of what you budget to spend after all those final bars and what's actually spent is less than that. So. Just real quick on the Rita side, the statement of net position, again, the balance sheet, their assets. You can see it's going to be driven by total capital assets and cash amounts have been extremely steady over the last five years. On the liability piece, same thing, net pension liability and their total debt. Their total debt's been extremely consistent, no changes. It's just really what they owe to, to the other, the participants, you and, and the city of Artesia. The rest of it's going to be the NPL and the OPEB. And then again, their equity is the same thing. As you see that unrestricted item, it drops down to that negative 1.0. That's because, again, they don't have the assets to cover it and everything's on the liability side. So. Their revenues and expenses, uh, really, there's pretty consistent year over year. You have subtle changes from what, what their services are. From a finding perspective, these are the ones, we discussed them in detail at the exit conference. They are within the report, management's responses within the report, towards the back, probably around pages 215, 216, 217 area. The two that, one thing I want to point out is when you have a finding, when you say, when it says 2019, that means they're new findings. So if there were items that said 2018, those would have been repeats. That number stays the same, and these are all considered New Mexico. So what those truly mean is they don't rise, the definitions of findings, if it was a material weakness, it means something that's significant. If something goes wrong here, it could materially affect the financial statements or the user of the financials, and there's nothing like that. Significant deficiency is, does not rise to the level of material weakness, yet still merits the attention of the governing body, and none of these rise to that level. Okay? These are, again, other matters that in any other state, they're actually reported as management comments or verbal comments to, to you. Okay? So they're not something that necessarily mean that you're going to have to do a policy change or anything like that, but they're informational for, for y'all. Okay? So two, the two that say NM 2019, 001 and 002, those are the ones from the county. And the other ones that say CU, that designates component unit, which is Rita. Those are the three that were on the Rita side. From the single audit, we looked at the FEMA program and we also looked at the CDBG program. What these two, uh, showed, unmodified opinions, these are the direct and material compliance requirements that are responsible for those. You have controls around them. We have to test those controls. We actually have to test the compliance with all those different compliance requirements. I know, you know, Roberta's up at grants items, so she's working on that. So the FEMA program's extremely challenging to be able to do it the way they have these project worksheets and everything. So, uh, based on what was there, there was nothing that rose to the attention to, to be considered a finding, and we had the, the unmodified opinion over those compliance requirements of allowable activities, the reporting side, allowable costs. On the CDBG, this was new this year, so there's also those same three reporting requirements as well as a period of performance and then some special tests and provisions that we looked at. And again, an unmodified opinion and no findings to report. So pretty clean. I think you guys are doing a good job. You know, keep that up. The, the reporting side is always challenging with those federal grants and, and, and the, the team does a really good job on it. So continue to support them and, and work through those. Upcoming standards, there's a couple items that really, this coming year, 2021, is statement number 84. This is going to be anything that's considered a fiduciary activity. So for example, anything that the treasurer holds for other people, uh, for, you know, the city, for its property taxes. There's not going to be substantial change on those except for a reporting change and the way that the financials are going to look in, in those custodial funds. There are some other technical items that you have to work through all of those custodial funds. And I, and, and Roberta just was, we just sent some information down to Roberta on that from her presentation I gave last week on it, to work through the implementation process and how you evaluate the county's administrative involvement and the revenue sources that generate some of those funds to determine whether or not they're truly custodial or truly, um, county money. It's, it's a clarification of a standard that's been in place for almost 20 years. And talking with, just an example, Burnet Leo County, they have 85 agency funds. Um, and they believe that about three of them, they might have to look at to change the reporting. That's about par for the course. They, it's, it's about 80% you're going to have doing it right, but there's subtle tweaks that need to be considered. So when the treasurer's office or anyone goes to look at what that is, if you've got questions, let us know. The one other change that I want to inform you of that is still in discussion is there are unintended consequences with all statements. And one of the ones that was unintended is that based on the guidance, 457 plans become fiduciary component units and would therefore be subject to audit underneath the county. And you have a 457 plan that only has a few participants. That was not the intent of GASBIE, and they are currently discussing whether or not they are going to exclude that from the scope of the statement or include it in the scope of the statement because the challenges of auditing that as part of the financial audit are, are, it was, it's not going to be easy. So I at least want to put that out there. They were supposed to hopefully have some decisions. They were talking in, at the November board meeting. Hopefully they exclude those from the scope of that statement. Otherwise, that would be subject to the audit itself, but just letting you know what's out there. And as soon as I know, I'll let you know. 87, uh, I know Roberta and Jessica are working on, that is related to leases. So the reason I go through the debt numbers is because GASBIE has a current trend of putting all debt items on the books and all the information that's related to it. GASBIE 87 will be effective for the 2021 year, and this is all leases. So all leases will become capital leases. There's not going to be anything considered operating, which therefore means it goes to a right to use, a right to use asset and a lease liability, which affects again, all of those, those numbers. The hard part about this, I know one of the questions that was just brought up was, um, you know, there's things like mineral rights are excluded, but the land in which that is on is not excluded. So you have to be able to sever some of those leases to determine which portion becomes a lease and which portion is not. So there's some, again, subtle differences. Anytime GASBIE gives you three years to implement a standard, it takes, it, it's because there's a reason for it. And that's this one. Okay? So no, that's 2021. My advice is tackle 84 and then jump right on to 87. So. Absolutely.
87, have there, the thoughts about the unintended consequences, there are a lot of, of lease on a printer.
So with that.
It becomes overly burdensome. That's just ridiculous.
I agree with you. Um, I'm waiting to see what the state does. Because part of it, the way 87 works is that they, they start with the non-cancellable portion. That's null and void. You can't enter into that in the state of New Mexico. Then there's the reasonable, I'm going to get the terminology wrong. There's a specific word they use. Is it reasonably possible or is it likely that you're going to extend the use of that? Yes. So therefore that becomes a lease liability in how you record for it. Now, how that works with the threshold, you can actually set a threshold of what is going to be considered the liability itself. In the state of New Mexico, you have a $5,000 asset rule, so how are they going to deal with that? My advice, what I'm thinking is 5,000, okay, but no copiers 5,000 anymore, right? There very few are, so it won't count for that. However, if you have service contracts that are part of that lease, they might go there. And so there's some of those little things to work through. The state auditor has not released what they're going to be doing on that. I'm meeting with the state next, in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, they're not going, they're going to enforce that 5,000, say they don't have to be, as well as there is, again, policy that might be able to be put in place from the county side that says you don't have to account for these in this, at this level. So that's something I think to work through.
Again, at the end of the day, the value of what you're trying to accomplish and the effort it takes to accomplish it, that's.
I 100% agree. I'm just, again, I'm a historian.
The problem is you have people sitting in New York City adopting these standards and, and getting comments from people on the, on the East Coast and stuff. And, and so, and not all the time do we have people comment out in the West where, where application makes a difference.
We did get one of, one of our clients that does a lot with oil and gas specifically in the, in the, from the state side. We have a question that was put into the implementation guide. We have to clarify some of, some of those. The implementation guide is out for leases. Anytime there's a big statement, they release their own guide. And basic, for, for example, for fiduciaries, it's 55 or 58 questions all related to different, how are you going to do this? And for example, the counties that, they say if you have a taxing entity that receives taxes for others, are those considered, and it's very clear. So it clarifies 100%. Nope, those are going to be still custodial funds. So it kind of interprets that. Just to give you an idea of how complicated the leases are, this is following the FASB side, and FASB implemented this a year ago and delayed it. So it's so complicated that on the FASB side now, public entities had to implement it, and the non-publics have one-year grace period, and they've pushed it off another year because it's not easy. So. Um, just something to be aware of, I, Roberta and Jessica are working on it. We had a phone call the other day that they were asking questions on it that I had to jump off of. But, you know, we're, uh, so there was a question she sent down, and it was specifically related to the land and the mineral rights piece and how you sever them. So you're going to have to go through those different lease agreements. Okay? Just the last few things that we see that are value-added, just within the world that we live in. IT, you know, you've got a good IT department here, but doing threat assessments, if it's not us, have someone do it. I am not qualified to do a threat assessment. We do not do threat assessments as part of the audit themselves. There, we have a group in Florida that does, that's all they do all the time. Uh, we've had them work on a couple of our clients to, they, the clients were intrigued about because of the fact of ransomware and phishing attacks that have been going on. There were five school districts with phishing that were shut down just this last year. Just knowing that what your vulnerabilities can be, it's something to always consider that, you know, to, to look at. You house a lot of information for the general public, and it's, uh, I had one client that was looking at doing, got hit with a phishing attack, and I guarantee, and then they had to do it under emergency, and it cost them seven times as much as what it would have, and they were down for three weeks. So can you, I, they had a hard time functioning for that three weeks. So just knowing what's going on in the IT landscape and being aware of it. If there's anything in relation to training that you guys need, always continue with that. There's good conferences out there. If there's anything specific, when it comes down to those items, the 84, 87 implementation, going through what those policies could be, helping you to clarify those. Those 10 to 20% on those funds, let us know. We're here to help to make sure that they're there. And I know the team always reaches out to us. Other than that, we just want to say thank you to Rita and to the, to the board for the county. You guys have been very hospitable to us. We really enjoyed working down here for the last few years. And, um, the team is great, so I just want to thank them for all their hard work because it's not an easy task to put up with, uh, us for so long. So we try to, we try to make it good, but it's not always easy because they've got to do their day jobs and get out a 200 and some page financial statement, which can be challenging. So.
They don't put you in the conference room and turn the heat up?
They don't. They don't. They put us right out in front so they can keep a watchful eye on us. I know where I'm going to be next year. If you have any questions, my contact information is on that handout. Please reach out. We do have a local office here. I am out of Albuquerque, but if you need anything, our local office here can, can help you out. Are there any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you again. And our finance department is amazing. Roberta, Jessica, and the entire team, it's a great job. And, um, I tell you this every year, but when I came on, we had so many findings. And this is my eighth year as a commissioner, and it's absolutely amazing to have this report. And we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, uh, appreciate the report. Looks like we've got to get to work on 87 and figure out what we can do to.
Yeah.
Keep the, keep the wolves at bay there.
Commissioner Wood?
No, I don't have anything. Just thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
Nothing. I would just echo what Susan said. Our finance department's top-notch, and I appreciate everything they do. So, and thank you for helping out or coming down.
Always.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Chairman, um, we need a, we need a motion to approve the.
I also want to say one thing. I have two audit reports, if any of the commissions interested in having a copy.
I make a motion to approve R-20, their acceptance and approval of Eddy County's 2018-2019 audit.
Okay, have a motion, but have a second.
Second.
Okay, have a second. Question? Call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Can I move to the trailing agenda now?
Yes, you may.
Okay. That's okay. Community service of us, uh, budget adjustment. Wes Cooper.
Wes, Wes is still in Santa Fe. I told him I'd cover this. They're moving, they need to move about 34,000 from their, um, oh, what's it called, their?
Professional services.
Professional services, general ledger line. And they're going to move it over to finish funding the 2020 census activities that they have. So it's a, it's a, not a budget adjustment, it's a budget move within the, within their existing budget.
A transfer.
Transfer. Okay. Have a mess, have a, any questions?
Sir.
Questions?
No.
Questions? I have none. So, uh, if not, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the community services budget adjustment.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Question? Call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Volunteer fire department para form approvals.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
This is an annual thing that we have to have done. The chairman of the board has to sign all of the para requests for the VFDs. And the mayor, or the mayor, the governor did open up where they can go back and recover any time that maybe they weren't credited in the past, so we will have those forms as well. We just need permission to be able to bring those to you, Mr. Chairman, and have you sign those as we receive them.
Okay. Question? Commissioner Crockett?
No.
Got you.
No, sir.
Woods? No question for me. Can I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the volunteer fire department para form approvals.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Question? Call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Resolution and agreement consent agenda. Is there anything that we need to pull?
If I, if there's a misspelling on one of these, do we need to pull that or no?
No, we'll just correct it.
Okay.
We do need to pull our 2014, 2020, the committee report. Then you can look at it, and if there's any adjustments on which committees members participate in, then we could, um, make those corrections and get a motion to approve the amended form. So you have up here the committee forms and who's, who's, so if you want to change or modify or adjust, you have that opportunity. And we could do it as you decide to amend it or not. And then, or you can leave it as is and approve it. So.
Does anybody have a change or want to pull it?
Do we need to pull it to discuss it?
I think we should.
Do you want to pull it and table it till we, till next meeting so we can look at it?
Yeah, let's pull it and, I'd like to pull it, and I've got one quick comment on it.
Yeah, I have a quick comment, too.
And if you want, you could agree to approve it as amended by your input, or you could do it the next meeting. It's up to you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda pulling item. Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda pulling item R dash twenty dash fourteen twenty twenty committees.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, question? Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett? Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda is okay.
Mister Chairman, on the Carlsbad Main Street Board?
Yes.
I'm the actual sitting board member on that and Brian Stevens is supposed to be the alternate. Carlsbad Main Street? I'm the actual member, Brian is the alternate. That's all I had, Mister Chairman, on so far.
Mister Chairman, on the Eddie County Planning and Development Advisory Committee, says Blaine Norton. I believe that's Lane, is it not? Or is it Blaine? I don't know Blaine.
Lane was Blaine Norton on the planning and.
I believe that's Lane, I don't know who that is.
Is that Bo's son?
Lane?
It's Bo's son, yeah.
Oh, it's Lane.
It's Lane, okay.
And on that one as well, Mister Chairman, I know Jeff McLean has moved out of town. And I think that Commissioner McCutcheon was going to appoint somebody.
Okay.
Okay.
Why hesitate?
We talked about it, but it's been like around Christmas time.
I don't even remember, so I will uh.
Let the light be put on the spot.
I will get that done. I've I've shook the task, but I apologize.
But you had somebody really good in mind.
It's I think it was Lane.
That's what I think too.
I remember you mentioning.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it, okay. I will I will find somebody and have them by the next meeting to put on here.
Okay. So we'll table this till the next meeting?
On the D W I Advisory Council, I know Commissioner Woods, the chairman, they have those at noon in Carlsbad. I've never made one and I'd love to be a part of the board, but I'll never make one as long as I own a restaurant at noon.
Well, the last one was in Artesia, but it was after the commission meeting. I made it, it was like I was late, but I got there.
Right.
But it's it tough sometimes because they schedule them on the same day as the commission meeting. Maybe that's to help us out and if we get out in time, we can make it, but.
Yeah.
You know.
So my point is that I think last year I didn't necessarily, I I was told because I was chairman, I had to be on it. But if if somebody wants to take that spot, I would love for somebody that can participate. It's a great board.
I wouldn't mind taking that spot.
And I would love.
That's one board I've never been on, so.
Yeah, that'd be great because I know they need more help than what I'm able to give them, so.
They do a lot of good things.
A lot of great stuff and they need it.
Yeah, if it's okay with the other commissioners, I wouldn't mind taking that.
I think that's great for me.
Are there any other changes that we can see?
You're going to be the vice chairman? Susan?
Mister Chairman, I'm just just wondering about the last item. Um, if anyone has now used that still, it's the mayor's road task force, is that still an active committee which I need? And I believe Commissioner Crockett, you are now on a different task force, should I add that to this list?
Yes, I'm the chairman of the mayor's southwest bypass, southwest loop. Or bypass, whatever you want to call it, task force committee. Councilman Leo Estrada is actually the co-chair.
And I can contact the city with the membership or?
Yes, and from the county, it's Jason Burns is the alternate member on that.
Okay.
I think I removed myself because we had a quorum on a regular basis, so I I removed myself from that.
So we're in the road task, road task force still on?
Yeah, I'm still I'm still here. We hadn't we hadn't met. I don't know what because we've got the. We've got the the uh, the west bypass, that's what you guys are, right? But then we've got the road task force. I don't know what the difference is on those. So I guess I guess leave them on there. We won't have too many meetings.
Didn't we switch you and I on this, Brian, well?
Yes. And I would really. I'd really like to stay on that again this year because I've been on it since the beginning on that authority.
You need to get it finished and tied up.
We are, we are. I guarantee you.
Señoroso.
We have a meeting, a calling meeting just about every two weeks now. We're on it.
We're not paying no more money.
They understand that very well. Between myself and John Heaton, they have, they know that.
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's move on.
Thank you.
We want to prove it? I mean, I think we're done.
Are we going to approve it or are we going to wait until next committee? Next time, next meeting?
We can approve it as amended at this point.
I think we just approve it as amended and move on.
Okay, give me a motion.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the list of Eddie County board and committee designations and appointments for twenty twenty as amended.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Question? Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett? Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay, uh, department updates.
Jason, good morning.
Morning. Very quickly. Um, bucket sign tracker in the south, we've added three and completed eleven. We're patching on uh, all roads, finishing Angel Ranch blading and starting on London tomorrow. And today they're mobilizing equipment out there. In the north, um, they've added one and completed one on our uh, tracker. And we're patching on Bolton and Orange Ranch and finishing up our blading on Mallet as well as hauling our N M D O T millings to the yards so that we can better utilize those. So. Questions on anything we got going on? Concerns? Yes, sir.
Just why you're here because it's you're the only one that it's sort of more involves is, but I've got a question for clarification. Because last night when I called you to say, you know, I had a customer in the restaurant that they had potholes on the road. Well, prior, we were always directed to talk to then Rick, which Rick would relay it to Jason, you know, it. Because we get in trouble now. As long as I'm not directing him to fix them, I'm just calling Jason to say.
You can do that, that's not a problem.
Okay, but I know it isn't, but I want to make sure we're clear because I feel awkward doing it now. Because I'm not making any directions and I want that clear to everyone.
Reporting.
I'm reporting it. Y'all choose to do what you want with it. I would prefer to be fixed it someday. That's why we're calling, but uh, you know, I just in the past, it was very awkward and kind of, I don't, I don't want any miscommunication that. When I call and say, hey, there's potholes here, please fix them, but you know, do it when you at your discretion.
I I feel like it's a that that when you call and report something that you're not calling me as a commissioner, you're calling me as a concerned citizen and reporting issues that. We're going to treat just like if if the citizen reporting it to you is going to call us and they I get phone calls all the time.
I just wanted to clarify it in front of everyone because I know it was it was always beaten into us and and I just didn't agree with it necessarily because it makes more sense to call you and say, here it is.
And and we're.
It does and I call him all the time.
Well, I knew you.
I have no problem with it.
You know.
But he's not number one.
But but you can also encourage them to hit the county website and.
And I did that too. I told them where the county website was, how to follow it and everything else, but I just I just wanted to clear up what I'm doing in that a way if.
I'm glad you said that.
That resulted because of some things were done by prior commissioners.
Yeah.
That don't occur.
That's all I'm going to say.
Well, and that's it, but that's why I wanted to make clear what I my intentions were when I call someone, I'm reporting the problem. Y'all are the experts. I expect y'all to preferably fix it um, at some point, but I'm not directing you to fix it.
With the support of Mister Davis, uh, however it gets reported, it gets reported, we'll put it right on our schedule and get right on it.
And we'll look at the priorities and where the crews are and make the most use and efficient use of the crews and address those issues systematically.
And and we're bringing you a solution to the to the what we call the the road tracking deals, the potholes, the, you know, we need to fix a hole. I mean, those those are minor issues. We can go get right on those now when it's, we need to go work on this road and yeah, well, that's what we prioritize and schedule them out and um, the major projects, so anyway.
The uh, I, you know, the one thing that when people come to talk to me, I immediately direct them to that website icon. Because I tried to express to them the importance of of the documentation. When it goes to the website and uses the icon, then we have documentation that Jason can use to go fix the problem areas. And the safety problems that we might have on our roads and call, it's like I tell them, I say, you call me, you call Commissioner McCutcheon or Commissioner Woods. Uh, the problem is if we're doing something, maybe we don't get it relayed to the proper people on an expeditious manner. If you go to that website, then that goes immediately to the road department, so it's that important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. You're doing a very good job, by the way. Any other department updates?
Just wanted to inform the commissioners, there was a vehicle that ran into our sub-office in Artesia last week. The owner of the company has already repaired the handrail uh, on the handicap ramp. It was done, they wrecked it on Wednesday, it was done on Friday and so prestige equipment rental up there in Artesia, they're doing right by us.
Lights are, thank you. The lighting is in progress?
They did have to make a claim with their insurance company as well and I'm imagining that's not going to be an immediate fix, but it is in the works as well. All all I know is they've done everything they've told me they were going to do to date has been done exactly and exactly when they said they were going to do it, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Any other department updates?
I have an update. I wanted to publicly come before you all and call out Jason's mechanics in the south department and thank them for the work they helped us with with code enforcement vehicles this last week. They came and got one of them, took it out, fixed a flat for us out there, came in, rescued my people stranded at the city building, changed a battery out for them. And I just want to thank Jason's mechanics for that. Albert Disgrud did a fine job.
Thank you. I love it when I hear we're working together. Okay, any other department updates? Okay, moving forward, travel consent agenda. Any questions, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything on there.
Do we need to approve it then? Do we need an approval to move forward?
I don't remember that there's ever not been anything on there.
First time I've ever seen it.
Emergency business.
No, none.
Okay. Legislative update.
All our legislative affiliates are attacking the legislation. They've been full on both the Jerry's been up there most of last week, came home, reloaded, went back up Saturday and has been there since. So lots, lots of engagement, lots of involvement and and uh, the agenda or the items of interest for the county are progressing. We'll we'll see as things come to the floors for votes, but um, a lot of positive outcomes. And continued reinforcement with legislators and cabinet members on commitments for the county. There are there are a couple that are um, N M D O T, Secretary Sandoval, um, we spoke about it last meeting, but those those things are continuings. And um, I think the voice and the recognition is at least from a from a new individual's perspective, seems to have a little bit of resonance, which is great. So thank you for all of the things that you continue to do and we'll get a report um, from Jerry as as things go on. Wes is up there doing the same thing, working on the House Bill three twenty-seven for the bypass appropriation, the tax incentive credit bill. And the the lodgers tax bill. Plus, they've also been weighing in on several other. Commitment uh, issues, testifying, things like that, so very active.
If I may, Mister Chairman, uh, I'd like to, how did the bags go? Have y'all heard anything from any of the legislatures on on the material or?
I've gotten three texts and they all thought they were great. They said they were wonderful, they really liked the little stress barrel. And I don't know, Gay Kernan said that everybody that sits around her thought they were really cool, so.
Are we going to take those to the secret like Sandoval, that would be a cool deal for him to have one? Are we, did we do that or just to legislatures at this point?
At this point, we we blanketed the legislators, but we have ample material that we could certainly canvas the 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 cabinet secretaries and we just need to plan and execute. That's not a problem, that's.
Did you guys take them to meetings?
I we gave two, I gave two to the governor.
Oh, okay, okay.
Jerry said they took them to the meetings when they went.
They were they were surveyed to the news.
Okay.
I didn't go to to all of them, uh, but the ones I went to, sometimes they were too scheduled at the same time, but the ones I went to, uh, they were received.
Okay.
On that suggestion, the D O T commission meeting is in Carlsby here in about a month, so.
The nineteenth.
Hit all those commissioners and the secretaries, it'll be in town.
Yeah, it's going to be good just to get those numbers for sure in front of those.
Absolutely.
Maybe we'll have our other material too.
Yeah, the um, do it now or we can do it in in my comments, but um, all along the same line, um, we've taken the A ten image. And we've taken a two-page advert in the Albuquerque Journal, special edition pullout for Sunday.
I like that.
And I was going to have the Tara has the Tara has the copy. First page is Feed the Horse and some dialogue at the bottom. And the second page is the um, statistics from Arrowhead Center that um, got tweaked by Haley Klein from Artesia. I mean, those really popped and so you got two-page ad in the Albuquerque Journal, we'll get copies, but it's in the special business edition pullout. So that'll publish the ninth.
On the tenth.
The tenth, so um.
That's awesome.
We're also looking at billboards between Albuquerque and Santa Fe with that same image. I think that we'll we'll get you copies and show you, it's it's pretty, pretty striking.
Can we use lodger stacks for that?
That's that's what we're doing, yes, sir.
Okay, great, awesome.
Yeah, so.
Outstanding.
So we're again just trying to reinforce the message.
Love it.
And uh, we're working on a plaque for the governor that we could we could give to her. That's the same image, Feed the Horse, has a little oil drop in it with and the message. Show them, show them again and show them one more time.
I wish we had one of those three D printers that we could scan that and put it in that and do a little three D printer of that.
I don't know if we could do that on lodger stacks, but maybe. Isn't that isn't that construction we have for advertisement? Anyway, so a lot of lot of activity on that front. We'll continue to find opportunities to share the messages and share the material and.
I think we need bronze out front.
Yeah.
Like Artesia has all the, you know, we just get a little skinny horse out there.
I'm good with that.
I like it. I like it.
Wrecking load of money.
Yeah, yeah. That's construction.
Yes, that's construction.
Okay, uh, uh, elected officials. Okay, nothing from elected officials, county manager comments.
I, I think I shared most of them of the advertisement. Session is, the legislative session is just now on the others, on the downhill side of half. Um, we'll, we'll see what, what goes. A lot of discussion about monies and appropriations and, um, we'll see if those discussions turn into commitments. But I think there's been a high level of engagement, at least from my observation, with all of our representatives and more, uh, up there to, to reinforce that message and the need. And then people are understanding and just seeing the news articles, Eddie and Lee County. I, I did meet with, uh, Mike Gallagher, the Lee County manager, last week. We talked about, um, a unified voice. One of the efforts that was in the, uh, agreements section was an agreement that Lee and Eddie County would work together on Campbell Road, um, to repair and rebuild that. Um, we'll use that. Uh, they're, they're approving the same, uh, agreement today in their meeting. And, uh, then we'll be able to use that with the NMDOT, Secretary Sandoval and the governor and say, look, here's what we can do when you come together. So, um, we'll look for more of those types of opportunities to have a larger voice from Southeast New Mexico.
Great. Okay, commissioners, Commissioner Crockett.
Oh, it's, I apologize I missed the last meeting. I was in DC, but it was been a busy three weeks from, between Santa Fe and then DC. DC was fantastic. We had some really great meetings. Um, actually got to meet with the, uh, lady that pretty much approved or denied our build grant and I got a lot of information. And the longer the conversation went on, the more information she gave. So I'm going to be getting with Wes and Al on that and then I'll let them come back to the group and talk about that. Um, but some really good comments kind of on how dynamic our grant was last year. And then this year, they were a little bit disappointed with the content of the grant. So, um, got some, I have two pages worth of notes on that, so that was really good. Um, we got to actually meet with the, um, person that took Rick Perry's place with DOE. He was part of our ECA meeting. So it was just a really good trip in DC. Um, I keep telling everybody this is a joke, but as you know, when John Heaton goes, you don't get the microphone very much. And we all got the microphone a lot this time. So I, I was texting John Heaton and giving him a hard time, but he was doing a lot of great things in Santa Fe and I appreciate that. But, um, been on the phone a lot with the mayor, Steve McCutcheon and Wendy, Jerry Fanning, working on some things. Um, they're back and had some really good phone calls yesterday with Jerry Fanning, Wendy and Wes. And I just want to say, it is just refreshing to see the county and the cities working together up in Santa Fe. It's just absolutely amazing. And those three are up there doing some really great things. Um, I got a text message from Gay Kernan and Greg Fulfer. It was a joint one and then we wrapped Ron Griggs into it on Monday. There is some special appropriations money of 300,000 that each senator, that John Arthur Smith has given each senator to, um, delegate out. So we had Wes and Wendy went and got those applications real quick and filled them out within like two hours. And I think that it looks like we probably will get 300,000 from Fulfer and 300,000 from Gay Kernan. And they both designated those monies to go to the West Bypass because there's a potential of getting some pretty large monies for the East. So this would kind of put some seed money in there. So that's been pretty cool. Also, Al had given me some potential information that he wanted the Department of Development to, um, produce some flyers basically that state what's happening in Eddy County, like the number of jobs we have, what our healthcare looks like, um, how, what employers, like Navajo employs X amount of people and just some really great flyers to hand out. The executive board of CDOD approved those on Tuesday, so they're going to be working on that and working with Al. And I think that's a fantastic idea. And other than that, I think that's it. Busy times.
I'll just keep mine pretty short. Do appreciate, uh, Mr. County Manager and, and the team getting together. I think we're doing a lot better at marketing now. I'd love the billboard idea with the skinny horse and the bullet points on there. I think it's just absolute, it's absolutely wonderful and a picture's worth a thousand words. So do appreciate that. Um, this meeting with Secretary Sandoval, uh, it's coming in on the 18th?
19th.
19th. Um, we may, I, I, I don't know, I'm planning on being there. Maybe the commissioners are planning on being there. I think it's a, I think it's a pretty big deal when we're all there to, to talk to them. You may want to post for a quorum that and kind of prepare. But, uh, we had a really good reception with him in Santa Fe and he appreciated the, the, well, Wes and, and Al reaching out to him, but also, uh, the elected officials and their involvement there as well. So I think that, that says a lot if we can, we can be there and try to help. He's, he's working for us, so hopefully we can get something done there. Um, wondered if we had a date to return to Santa Fe? I know that we can't have response during the comments, but not, not yet, maybe, okay. But just let me know that date and I'll, um, plan on being there again. Um, and then I had mentioned a couple of meetings ago about signs for Eddy County. If we could use lodger tax money, we said we could for that. I don't know if we've come up with any slogans or anything like that. It's kinda, Burns has kind of got something maybe. So I don't know if that's something that we want to go ahead and do or if that's something that is, doesn't seem like a good idea. But I just would like to, to put that up, you know, on any of the major thoroughfares coming into town, uh, into, into Eddy County. So also would like to thank Jerry Fanning. Um, been getting his texts. We know where things are at. We know what bills are going on. It's been a huge, uh, uh, it's been a huge help in reporting to the constituents. And anytime anybody asks, hey, where's this going? Hey, we're getting good feedback on this bill. We had to adjust this bill and make things a deduction rather than a, than a write-off or something, whatever the, you know, whatever the terminology was. But we've been, been able to change some things and see those things evolve. And it's, it's wonderful because the city is on a lot of those texts that I've been getting. Uh, you know, a lot of us at the county are on, on those texts and that's really great to be able to report back. So again, to kind of echo what Susan said, it's wonderful to see Eddy County, Carlsbad, Artesia, everybody working together with United Front. We've even joined up a lot more with Lee County. They asked us about the, the, the survey that the Arrowhead study. They said, hey, where'd you get that? Where can we get that? Well, how can we do that? And we said, well, we're better than you guys, but we'll give, we'll give you guys the information, you know? So Lee County's always on the ball. But Lee County's really usually always on the ball. So, um, I really liked it, that, that we actually had something to put into it, you know? We'd actually done something first, so that was, that was great. But Lee, Lee County is just wonderful. So, um, hopefully they can get that deal and we can go, uh, we can go with two reports, which really, which really tell the, the story. So other than that, I won't take any more time, but, uh, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Woods.
I don't have anything, just, uh, watching the legislative process go and, um, I know there's a lot of talk about the red flag law and what it's going to create. You see it on social media, uh, people talking about it. Not very many people for it, the one beside I'm on, but I know there's a lot of people, uh, you know, in Santa Fe that are. And, and our governor actually got some national attention on that the other night after the president's State of the Union. The lady out of, uh, governor out of Michigan, uh, made a comment about the red flag law in New Mexico and mentioned, uh, our governor's name. So got a little national attention on it, so we'll see what happens on it.
Commissioner Henry?
No, I'm going to echo what everyone else says, so I'll keep it very short. I just think it's wonderful to see us take, take our message to Santa Fe in such a strong way. And I think that's why we did what we've done, um, in taking it. I mean, we're seeing great results. I think we're getting great attention. We're calling attention to who deserves it, you know? I think we're, we're highlighting oil and gas industry, which is a huge asset to this, this county and this state. And I need to appreciate those folks out there. They're, they're great jobs, they're good folks and, uh, I think they're working hard with us, trying to help them. So, uh, love that the message is going, love that we're going to continue. It's really fun to be, uh, and please, well, whatever, uh, it is going to be taken, always going to be taken. It's been a whole lot of fun the last year or two, you know? Because we're coming up with ideas and rather than talking about them, we're firing them. And it's, it's fun. I love that kind of stuff. I love that we talked about a horse with a, a wagon and then within a week, we had a picture of a horse and a wagon and we're taking the message. Um, that's, that's what makes me excited. Hopefully that's what makes y'all excited because rather than continuously talk, we're actually getting a lot accomplished. Not to say we didn't get it in the past, so that's why I'm saying, don't take it wrong. Everybody, we've always done good things, but it's really nice to see that here's what we want and then it's done. And then we don't have to talk about it again. Um, you know, it's nice, uh, the roads, we're getting a report to show us what the problem is so we can go figure out how to attack it. And there's just some really great stuff happening and it's happening in everyone's department. Every single group out there is doing it. Um, it just shows what you can get done when we all work together. We all work on the same plan and, and have that frontside focus and, uh, quit letting other things mess with us. This is where we're going, this is our message and this is what we're doing. So I appreciate it. Um, hopefully y'all don't take it wrong because it, it is a total compliment to everyone, uh, that, that we're getting stuff done. And I think the community sees us getting stuff done. I hear more comments about, wow, y'all, how are y'all doing that? How'd y'all get that pulled off? Um, not just roads. I mean, I'm tired of Jason getting all the credit doggone it. I don't know how he gets out of his room sometimes. It, it's across the board. I mean, uh, you know, we had an accident, bam, y'all were on it, you fix it, it's done. I mean, there's just, we don't mess around. And that's what I want people to know, Eddy County, we don't mess around. Here's what we're getting done and they can count on it when we say it's going to get done. So, uh, big props to y'all. I think it's, it's just fantastic to, to keep that rolling and take that attitude out there. That's, that's the way I would look at it. Lot of other stuff that, whatever, we all do a ton of things. Y'all don't really care all the time. We met with a lot of folks, I guess, and had a lot of good things. So if y'all have any questions about what I've done, go ahead and ask me. But other than that, I'll leave it with you.
Okay, I, I echo everything that's been said here. I just think that, uh, I think that each and every one of us ought to give ourselves a pat on the back because we're working as a commission. When we go do things, we do it as a commission. Everybody shows up to participate in that. And I think that it, it brings about the, the change that you're talking about, Commissioner Henry, is the fact that we work together to get things done. We go to Santa Fe together to get things done. And I just think that's a huge thing for a commission to do and I'm proud of each and every one of us. So, uh, that's all I have to say.
I got, I got one more thing. Talking to Susan just a second ago, I thought the State of the Union was a wonderful, wonderful address. And Susan's been increasingly disenfranchised with the Democratic Party now. I expect her resignation from that after Nancy Pelosi tearing up of the speech. So I expect some news out of, out of, out of Susan, um, shortly.
That was embarrassing.
Okay, I would entertain one more motion.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second question, call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay.
Ernie, your meetings have set average world records here. I don't know what's going on.